Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Joint Workshop with the Beach Business Improvement District. Madam Chair, would you like to call the role of your committee? Could you put your microphone on, please? Just push that button.
Thank you. Stuart Levy, Samuel Firstman, Fernando Calvo, Steve Zunt, Mike Fleming, Michael Monroe, myself, I'm here, Lisa Rizwan, and Lori.
Here.
Okay, you guys don't have a quorum, though, do you? Do you have a quorum?
No, yeah, we do. There's five of us. Oh, no, there's four of us.
We're missing one.
Yeah, there's no, there is, there are eight members, active members, so there's no quorum.
Okay, that's all right. We can still have, we can still have a discussion.
Yes, thank you for that.
So, good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here today. We really appreciate it. And, and so, tell us, Mr. City Manager, what's on the agenda for our workshop today?
Sure, so, we have Ingrid here that's been working with the bid. This is an opportunity to discuss long-term goals, vision, and also an opportunity to just highlight perhaps some of the opportunities that exist on the horizon and to speak it out here in the open.
Okay, very good. So, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, and there is a PowerPoint, so you'll be able to follow. But first of all, Mayor Tontalas and everyone else, thank you for meeting with us today. I'm just going to introduce myself and just tell you a little bit about what I do for my full-time job. I'm General Manager of the W Fort Lauderdale and been on the bid for eight years and Chair for the past three years. And I'll have my colleagues up here also introduce themselves.
Mike Fleming, General Manager of the Courtyard Fort Lauderdale Beach. Been on the bid for six, going on seven years now, and co-chair currently.
Lisa Nemore, General Manager for Bahia Mar. I've been on the bid for eight years.
And I'm Lori Johnson, Director of Sales and Marketing at the Western Fort Lauderdale Beach and the new Kempton Shore Break, which is kind of behind us. I've been on the bid for five years.
Very nice. So, why don't you begin your presentation?
Sure, so, we want to start with just letting you know, and I'm sure you all do know, but the bid was created in 2006. The last meeting that we had with the City Commission was 2017, and we will update you on some history.
So, what took us so long?
Yes, thank you.
2017?
And we're also going to discuss the alignment between the City Commission and the bid. I want to make it clear today that we are not discussing the bid expansion. There is a meeting to discuss that on October 3rd.
Okay.
Okay? A little bit of history, as I mentioned, establishing Fort Lauderdale Beach as a premier resort destination, specifically increasing tourism in our area is really one of our main purposes, expanding business revenue and increasing economic growth, developing pedestrian-friendly sidewalks, creating a unique sense of place for visitors to enjoy, and improving the overall image of the beach. In April of 2022, we had a great strategic meeting and came up with the bid goals. As you can see on there, continue to promote the district, keep current events that benefit the businesses and promote the beach as a destination, attract new events, attract additional complementary businesses to the beach, more activities, initiatives in the summer as that is the industry, hotel industry's low season, and explore, expanding the bid, as I mentioned earlier, which we will discuss in October. So, some progress that we made since the September meeting or since the April meeting is we revised the grant funding application, and it is available for you at your leisure, but the process was not very clear, and it made it for lengthy meetings and really no guidelines for people presenting for budgets. And therefore, we created a great funding application process that has been streamlined for efficiencies. We procured foot traffic data software to track impact and outcomes of events to ensure alignment with the bid's goals, to benefit the businesses and to promote the beach, and engage a consultant again to have that feasibility study done to expand. And then, of course, today, meeting with all of you, so thank you again for that. To the next one, as you know, we had assessment property must be derived from special benefit from improvement and services. Assessment must be fairly and reasonable apportionate among the properties that receive the special benefit, and the current rate is .8525 per $1,000 of the property value. I want to let you know that full year of 2024, the assessment for the properties is 1.2 million. The properties and the boundaries, the current bid boundary was determined when the bid was established and based on a feasibility study conducted in 2006. The district includes commercial properties along A1A between Sunrise Boulevard and Holiday Drive. Oh, go ahead. I'm fast. Well, Beach Improvement District Advisory Committee, you got it? Okay. Beach Improvement District Advisor was created in 2007 to monitor the progress of the Beach Business Improvement District and to make recommendations about service enhancements and special programs and events. The advisory committee consists of eight members, seven representatives from the 10 highest assessed properties in the district, and one representative from Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce Beach Council. Here are the properties and the advisory committee members, as you can see. Some of us are here today, but that's the assessed value, the primary members, and the alternate committee members also, and the top 10 businesses' properties. History of the bid's special assessment, this is the past 18 years, it's approximately $4 million from the assessment, 14 million, sorry, 4 million, that's not good enough, 14 million. Some promotional contributions and events that were funded, as you can see here, an example that we are sharing with you is from 2021 to 2024. The green shows the promotional contribution, and the blue is the special assessment. Thank you. And then, we have also chosen our promotional contributions and events that you can see up here, with many of them the airshow, and the list goes on here, and total is about $3.4 million from 2021 to 2024. We have generated a very robust marketing plan, a program chosen and implemented by this group in the term that we've been all together. We've launched a new rebranding marketing program. We have an amazing website, great social media, public relations marketing, and promotion opportunities. We have a calendar that we follow and go through on a monthly basis. We've won some awards, and we're very proud of that, the Life Luxe Magazine, Best Online Tourist International Resource for 2023 for the Southeast Florida, and 2023 Commuter Award, Best Branding for Fort Lauderdale Beach Logo and Brand Guidelines. We've done some other funding and programs that we have provided. Utility box wraps along A1A are still to be installed, the infrastructure to the South Beach parking lot to accommodate large events, beach cleanup, touchscreen kiosses in the Las Oles Ocean Park and outside the Las Oles Garage, and Lauderdale Go micro transit program. And that is our presentation.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions? Open this up to the commission. Because I have--
Not actually a question, but I just wanted to thank you for all the years of service. This has been a tremendous asset on the beach, and I really appreciate it, and I know all of the residents do. It's a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of money that's really gone into branding the beach, and hopefully you've seen the results. I know we've been through a couple of rough years, but I think things are getting better, and I just want to say thank you for the work. Thank you for the, you know, due diligence, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that. I mean, as you know, you know, most of us here are general managers, all of us, and directors of sales and marketing, so that is our primary role, but as contributors to this, we are very passionate to be on this committee and to provide the best we can to make, you know, the beach area much more attractive for our tourists and for everyone else, and our residents also.
So, I have a few things I'd like to talk about. So, originally, when we decided to establish the bid, it was an opportunity for all of us to consider ways to promote the beach now that we were evolving as a destination. Some of the brands that you all have brought to the beach have been significant and world-class, there's no doubt about it. And we appreciate the efforts of the folks that own and operate the individual hotels that are on the beach for continuing to invest and to have faith in the prosperity of the beach. So, when the bid was established, it was sort of like a, an opportunity to get together, those that wanted to get together, those that volunteered to participate, and to sort of self-tax, you know, we'll agree to charge ourselves a certain amount of money because we know that in the end, that everyone's going to benefit because we're promoting the beach in conjunction with Visit Lauderdale also, who is participating in this effort. I guess we, we're a little blessed that, that a county organization is using our city to promote, you know, to promote tourism, so we're very, very happy about that. But I think that's because you guys have done such a great job in promoting Fort Lauderdale. So, when you look at the number of clicks for Broward County, they don't, they don't talk to any other city but Fort Lauderdale. So, that's a testament to, to the kind of quality of hospitality you have brought to the beach and, and the visitor's experience that, that we have all become proud of because of the efforts that you all have made in your, in your various buildings and properties. So, because it's a self-taxing authority, the discussion regarding expansion at some point, we've got to think about, because a lot of those folks within the, if, that are being contemplated within those expanded boundaries may or may not want to participate. So, it's not really an enforced participation, it's just an opportunity for those who want to participate, who can participate, okay? Just want to make sure we're, we're on the same page there. Secondly, we talk about additional events, attract new events that benefit the businesses and promote the beach as a destination. As you know, there are people on the beach that, that don't want new events. They're happy with the events we have, you know, no more, we can't take it anymore. Commissioner Glassman hears it all the time. I hear from this, I hear from Commissioner Glassman, and, and it's, it's just one of those things that, you know, so maybe instead of thinking of new events, how can we improve upon the events we have already? For example, the, the food and wine, the program that we have there, it, it, last time, it was just an amazing experience, and, and, and a lot of people really participated in that, not just the restaurants and the various vendors, but thank you, thank you for your participation to help make that, you know, the kind of experience that I think has great, great opportunity to, to expand and to improve and, and to really compete with neighboring cities that do the same sort of thing. I think that if we collaborate and make that a better event, we can continue to appreciate what those efforts can ultimately bring to the city of Fort Lauderdale and the visitor's experience. So, so I'm excited to talk about those things. I think over the, the last, what, 16 years since this has been started, you know, there's been tremendous progress, you know, for, I go around the world and go around the country, and Fort Lauderdale is definitely branded. We're not the also-ran city anymore, largely because of the kind of hospitality experience that you have brought to the city that, that wasn't here before you started. So, I just wanted to make sure I made those comments so that when we do continue our discussion, you know, we can bring this experience forward. I don't know where the rest of your panel is today. You know, it would have been good if we had more participation in this discussion. I know everyone's busy, but I, I somehow get the feeling like you-- I know everyone's busy, but I, I somehow get the feeling like you, you're looking for more participation to be able to become more productive. So, I guess when we have our, when we have our October meeting, we can talk more about that, too. So, and, so Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts you want to add to this conversation?
Um, I want to.
Yeah.
It gets us every time, right? Good morning again. This, to receive this presentation is, is beautiful, it's a beautiful presentation. Outlining your contributions and the efforts and the passion that you all are exhibiting is really amazing, and I, I thank you for what you're doing. And I don't have any questions. This is very informative to me, so I'm looking forward to doveing in a little more and learning more about the entire process. But what I see today, I'm impressed with, and thank you for what you're doing.
Greg, do you have any additional thoughts you'd like to add to this conversation?
No, we greatly appreciate that the bid has always come through when we've had certain beach activities and they need additional funding. They've been very accommodating, and we appreciate that partnership and look forward to continuing, supporting each other to, to, you know, highlight this destination.
Yeah, I mean, we continue to receive so many accolades, and I know that in large part, they're through your involvement and support. And like the city manager said, sometimes we, we find ourselves in a shortfall where we can't close the gap on financing, and you guys have come through, and we really appreciate that. But what you have done is you've created a wonderful experience of coming to Fort Lauderdale Beach. People constantly repeat how, how, what a wonderful experience it has been coming to Fort Lauderdale, and, and, and why is that? Because somehow, you know, enhancing the beach experience has been truly a goal on the part of this Fort, this commission. When we approved having food service on the beach and, and now liquor sales, to enhance the experience for somebody who comes to Fort Lauderdale from, even from, if not from the United States, from other countries who, who expect that kind of concierge service, you know, while they're on the beach. So, you know, I applaud your initiatives in wanting that to have happened, and, and I appreciate the commission participating and supporting that effort, and we hear nothing but wonderful reviews for the type of experience you've created for us. So, let's continue to work together, and, and I'll leave it up to you.
All right. I just have last, a few last words to say. First of all, thank you again for having us here today. A couple of things, you hit on the word passion. Well, this is a very passionate team, obviously. We run our hotels and we report to our owners of our businesses and to our companies. Thirdly, I did want to thank, we have a great marketing company that we work with on the bid. It's called Brand Advocates, and her name is Tasha. And if you look at our social media, if you have a chance, she has grown this out of the world since it's been, since the 18 years. It is one of the best sites and, and growing, growing social media. And then also, I just want to say thank you to Ingrid. Ingrid is always guiding us behind the scenes at our meetings, so just a, a thank you for all that help also. Thank you.
Anyone on the board have any additional comments you'd like to make? Yes?
Yeah, I would like to just address, you know, one of the comments that you made about not, not necessarily adding more events, and we're very aware of, you know, events and, you know, kind of the, the feelings of the neighborhood. And so, we've intentionally, you know, not supported some events that were during peak times that we knew were not going to add anything, and we really focus on trying to fund things that are going to get national or international press. But then, we will, it will help enhance both our image within the world and also clicks and stuff through, through the website. So, that is one thing that we want, we, we do, we've heard that message, and we try to stay aligned with City Commission for that because we want to make it better for everybody on the beach.
Do you perhaps schedule any meetings with the Central Beach Alliance Board of Directors or once in a while just touch base, communicate, have a meeting? I would maybe recommend something like that in the future. Obviously, it's a very large neighborhood association, excellent attendance, probably the most of any neighborhood in the city, very engaged, and I just think maybe that would be a good idea if you reached out to someone like Bill Brown, the president, and perhaps just establish, even if it's just quarterly or twice a year, just to have that communication, see how their board's doing, your board. I would just recommend that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman.
Oh, by the way, thank you. Sorry it's a little late, but I want to welcome you. Thank you. I echo what the mayor has said. Thank you for the work you've done. The image of Fort Lauderdale has gone through the roof. Just a couple of very quick questions. I was looking through your presentation. 1.2 million dollars per year, it's based on, I thought it was revenue, but it gets its value of your, of the property value, right? And I saw that the top ones, 141 is the top contribution. How many members do you have in, in bid?
Eight, eight active.
Oh, there's eight total. I was going to say the average, but we saw them all here. And Tortuga, I saw that the biggest chunk was Tortuga. What, you, how do you support that group, that project? Just financially?
Well, with Tortuga, because it, it is one of the largest events that help the businesses on the beach. I mean, we evaluate after each event, and we didn't touch on this, but we have the people that we provide funding to to come back and let us know, you know, what was their income, what contribution did they do, so sort of like a post-recap after their events. And Tortuga has really been the one event, you guys can jump in, that has contributed to the businesses on the beach when it comes to restaurants and heads and beds, as we call it, or in the hotels to provide an increase in occupancy.
And I want to thank you for things such as the airshow. We're always looking for ways to add quality, you know, expand it and all that, and thank you for partnering with us for events like that. Thank you very much.
I think it's important to note, too, that when Tortuga was first came online, it was put into what we would call a shoulder date, and so what we've also been actively trying to do is spread our calendar out, but it created more demand for April, which, you know, back when I was here originally, April was kind of, you know, the, the slow slide into summer, and, you know, by putting events in those shoulder dates, April and May, it's helped, I think, all of the businesses kind of maintain a, a higher level of, of demand.
When is it scheduled for next year, do you know?
April 5th.
April 5th, okay. And you consider April to be the beginning of the, of the, the beginning of the end of the season?
Well, not anymore. I think that's kind of an accolade even to Tortuga that it's actually helped us redefine some seasonality, which is, you know, all of our desire is, you know, to not be as seasonal as, as Florida can be. And seasonality, if you talk to hotelier, I'm going to tell you it's based on when Easter falls, starts to, you know, it can waffle a little bit between when, if Easter's early or Easter's late. This year, like, it'll be a condensed spring break season because Easter is March 31st. Next year, it's, you know, way into April, and that actually, believe it or not, makes a huge difference.
So, we'll have to find more events to take place in April or May.
May is, is, you know, we're, that's why we're always looking to, you know, May and even into October, right? Those are kind of, weather is, is good, and those would help kind of smooth that out.
Well, the airshow's in May, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's, that's helpful. I remember years ago, when I once asked, why was the Miss America contest always happening on Labor Day weekend? And they said because it started in Atlantic City, and the, the hoteliers in Atlantic City wanted to find another excuse to stretch the season, so they, so we need a Miss America contest here. That's my, that's the main point.
Mayor, are you still watching?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
In August, we got in August.
So, and Tortuga dates did switch a little bit for this year. That's one week earlier because of the turtle nesting season.
Right, we have that to consider, too.
So, but, I mean, it came last year during the flood and still had great attendance, even with the airport closed. People drove down from Tampa and Orlando and took Ubers. I mean, it was.
Oh, it was definitely well attended, yeah, from everywhere. And I want to thank all your owners, by the way, speaking of turtles. I want to thank all of your owners for being compliant with the lighting regulations. I know, especially the W, I mean, you're, you have lots of lights and they're all compliant, and we really appreciate, you know, all your properties. We really appreciate that to, in order to maintain the ecology of the, of the, of the turtle nesting. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, there being none, so we'll see you in October. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.